Call the meeting back to order and welcome to the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education meeting. We are coming back in order because we previously went through the Area 267 Director District Eight Convention, but now we'll get on with the typical portion of our meeting. And now please join me in a moment of silence. Now please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now read the school district's mission statement. The Waterloo Community Schools commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. All right, the next item on our agenda and the first action item for this portion of the meeting is board celebration. And this first one is regarding Character Counts. And we have a couple representatives from Character Counts and Crystal Buzzett from the district. And Crystal's coming forward. Barb Gregerson and Bruce Clark. And Crystal, I'll turn it over to you. This is on Exhibit C on our board packet, starting on page 12. And actually, before you get started procedurally, we'll get the motion on the table. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education proclaim the week of October 21st through the 27th as Character Counts Week in the Waterloo Schools.
Moved to approve.
Thank you. And seconded and discussion. Crystal?
Thank you. And as Mr. Young mentioned, this week is Character Counts Week. It's something that kind of ties in really well with October. We've been really busy with bullying awareness. It's Red Ribbon Week. A lot of our students are doing a number of things throughout the month. And Cedar Valley Character Counts Committee has been extremely supportive of the Waterloo Schools. They've really been able to help us with different character training, leadership that we've been able to do for staff and for students. We've also had a number of our students and employees recognized for Character Counts. And so I will let Bruce Clark or Barb Gregerson, whoever decides they want to speak, to explain a little bit about what they're doing currently and some of our most recent recipients in the Cedar Valley.
Thank you, Crystal. And thank you, President Young, Dr. Norris, and the school board for the proclamation. We'll give you a brief summary of what our committee has been doing over the past year. And our committee does include several members of the school, Mindy Fisher and Ted Fleener, among some people from Cedar Falls Schools, and a diverse group of business people, retired people, retired educators, and others that believe that Character Counts that meet from time to time about monthly most of the year. Our big function last year was last April, we held the first Champions of Character in the Cedar Valley Awards Dinner, where we recognize the following businesses and individuals and organizations. Hellman and Associates was recognized for the business of character. Lowell Elementary School, which we'll talk about a little bit more, is a school organization of character. Danielle Meyer from Hoover as an educator of character. Jim Koroff from 93-5 The Mix as a businessman, adult citizen of character rather. Caitlin Trample from Cedar Falls, pursuing victory with honor. And Oliver Palmer, a student, posthumously was recognized student at Edison and Becker as a young citizen of character. These were all nominated for the state awards. And Danielle and Oliver and 93-5 The Mix received honorable mention. And if you haven't heard, the school organization Iowa Character Awards banquet in August, where a busload of us, of students and faculty and staff and friends and relatives, jumped on a bus and headed to Des Moines for one of the nicest functions you'll ever attend, the Iowa Awards banquet, where Lowell Elementary was, ELP class was recognized for their, as a school organization of character, on a very green project, on a very, a lot of leadership and a lot of innovation there. And there's got to be some future school board members on that, in that class or somewhere, I'm sure. We're also sponsoring the Old Creamery Theater productions in all the elementary schools in Waterloo and Cedar Falls this next year sometime, over the next couple of years, that we're funding that. And they do productions, one-act plays that center around the six pillars of character that show young people how they demonstrate the six pillars of character and specific things that they get into from day to day. There was an insert in the Courier this last Sunday that helped kick the week off. And that's our objective is to create awareness of and let people across the state know that Character Counts to those of us in the Cedar Valley. Barb, you're turning that.
I'm going to throw something because I recognize some faces. I've been doing puppets with the pillars of character for seven, seven years now at Orange Elementary School. And I also do it in two daycare centers in Cedar Falls, Cedar Valley Preschool and Childcare Center and Valley Park. And this year, I know there's quite a stress on anti-bullying. And I've added a component anti-bullying that I'm piloting at Orange School with the fourth and fifth graders as assessment to their bystander, the hallway hero. I have a puppet now that's Hank, the hallway hero. And I'm, I'm helping, he's got a cape and everything. He's really fancy. But I'm using that as an assessment piece. The counselors talked to the fourth and fifth graders in August about that issue. And I'm coming back in October and assessing what they remember in a friendly way. And I'm hoping that perhaps I'll be able to do that in other schools that, that use that. And I really appreciate the opportunity to do that. And thank you for listening and supporting Character Counts.
Take Hank with you.
But not Bruce the bully.
Thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you. And Bruce and Barb, you've, you've come before our board several times, but you've also spent a number of hours in our schools and worked very hard. We appreciate all you're doing in the Character Counts program. I think it being integrated in Waterloo is probably as good as any district around the state, but I think it's also done a lot of good. It's, it's had a very positive impact on our school district and our students.
The Cedar Valley is, I think nine or 10 times we've made trips down there for individuals or groups, businesses to be recognized. So they know about us across Iowa and they know that Character Counts around here.
We appreciate all you're doing.
Thanks.
And please tell the rest of your board as well and also all the volunteers also how much we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you again. The next item on our agenda is another very good thing. This is American flag donation from the Waterloo Exchange Club. And we have a number of representatives here from the Exchange Club. And with that, I'll introduce them, but also Crystal Buzzett. This is for information. But the flags have, have been or will be installed at Becker, Highland, and Orange Elementary. And there's a cost associated with this, with the donation, but we appreciate all you're doing. So Crystal, I'll turn it over to you to give us more information.
Yes, thank you. I'm very pleased tonight to have some members of the Exchange Club. We have the Exchange Board President right now with us too, Larry Schollenberger. And so I'll let him talk a little bit, introduce everybody else. But the Exchange Club has been extremely generous. They've donated a number of flags to a number of our new or newly remodeled elementaries. And this last, this year, they've donated 180 American flags and the holders. And Larry can show those to you guys and we can pass them around if you want to see them as well. That will go to Highland, the new Fred Becker Elementary. And then once Orange is completed, they'll also go to Orange as well. And so the total, or the total cost is $1,272.07. And I think it's just a great partnership with the Exchange Club. They've been extremely supportive of the Waterloo Schools and they're really focused on projects that center around Americanism and citizenship. And so what better way to show citizenship than making sure you have an American flag in your classrooms? Larry?
Thank you, Crystal. Superintendent Norris, Mr. Young, other board members, it's with great pleasure that the Waterloo Exchange Club presents these 180 flags and brackets to the Waterloo Community Schools. Americanism is one of the four pillars of the National Exchange Club. And we locally are very proud to work with the Waterloo Community School Systems to enjoy Americanism in our schools. I'd like to introduce, our photographer over there is Charlie Lott. Photographer emeritus, Dick Cole. Board member, Mike Knapp. And Crystal, introduce Larry Schollenberger. I'm the president this year. Thank you very much for having us and we'll look forward to, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead, Larry.
I guess I would just like to add a comment. The focus on the flag and our heritage and patriotism in general is really a longstanding tradition in this community and for the school district. As a matter of fact, it was 50 years ago this year that West High won the Bellamy Award, which is presented to one high school in the whole country, all for their patriotism and their, and their service to the country. So, so that was 50 years ago. I'm really pleased that we're continuing that, that great tradition today. So thank you very much.
And I, I just wanted to say also how much I appreciate the Exchange Club. They periodically have me down for an update on what's going on, but when I, I get there, they are always supporting our youth with different kinds of awards and recognition. So thank you guys so much for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
We have now come to the time when those who wish may speak publicly to the board. I would like to remind each group, or excuse me, I'd like to remind each person, whether you represent yourself or a group, that you have three minutes to speak during this portion of the meeting. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your remarks immediately. Waterloo is a national leader in Character Counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Throughout our meeting, we commit ourselves to these principles. At no time is it appropriate here to criticize the job performance of a specific district employee because personnel matters are confidential and they must be handled through the proper channels and not in a public forum. So this time, I'd like to invite anybody who wishes to come forward and address the board. You can step to the podium and just make sure that the green button is on. If you could just state your name and your address.
Yeah. My name is Paul Taylor. I live on 1158 Leona Avenue here in Waterloo. I'm a, I'm a youth pastor here in the community. And I've come here this evening to just voice a little bit of a thought or concern in regards to athletics on Wednesday evenings. I certainly appreciate all that you do to, to try and value we as youth pastors, the, the possibilities that we have in working with young people in churches. And I know that you, you have a guideline of being done around 5:30 on Wednesday evenings. But I know that speaking with some of our senior high students, that there are some coaches that actually are going way beyond the 5:30 practice times. And I've, I've talked with them and asked them to ask their coaches to sort of respect that time. I know it's a big, a big deal, both from Dr. Papas over at West High, he's, he's mentioned that that's their priority. And so I'm, I'm coming on behalf of myself and other youth pastors who, who do value character very dearly, beyond on and off the field, teaching our young people how to live their lives in respect for one another. And so I'm just here to just voice my concern that I wonder if there's a way that you could help us in, in, in sharing with the coaches that when we set down, you've set down the guideline of being done around 5:30-ish, that that could actually get done and we could have more time with our young people to work with them as well. So.
It will be done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And we don't want usually going back and forth. I think the concern, it sounds like, is more not that the, the policy's incorrect, it's just making sure we're, everybody's following the policy.
The policy is great. I can't thank you enough for, for valuing the time that we have.
Just make sure there's the fidelity in following the policy.
Would you mind speaking with our district athletic director that's right behind you? Cora Turner?
You don't need to say.
She can make it happen. Believe me.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
But thank you, thank you for coming and thank you for the reminder as well. Is there anybody else?
Can I just make a comment on that too?
Absolutely.
You know, as a side note, we, we appreciate the pastors and the youth groups because, you know, I think it's been clear that when the, when the schools and the churches and the parents, all three, send the same message and reinforce it for each other, everything works best, especially the whole character element. So I'm really happy that the pastors are involved to the extent they are and that we, and that we have a policy that supports that.
And I, I had talked to Paul too. I know him. And the thing is too, which I explained to him, when people have club sports, that's a different thing. The parent is authorizing it and you're saying to go ahead and go.
On Wednesday nights, but when it's a school function, it should be done at 5:30. And so that's, that, he had no complaints at all, just, just that. So I appreciate him coming too.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And yes, would you like to address the board? Yeah, if you could just state your name and your address.
My name's Elizabeth Smith and I live at 1634 Liberty Avenue. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Smith and I'm a sixth grade student at Hoover Middle School. I don't think it's fair to have a bus be late as many times as it has. It has been late at least six or seven times and more since it's been late a couple times recently. And I remember the second week of school, it was late twice in a week. That isn't fair because then students miss important things their teachers have to teach. Having the bus be late over and over could irritate the teachers too. When the doors opening, open and close, it distracts the kids. Then they have to waste time to redirect the kids again. I don't like being late because then I get behind with classwork and it's embarrassing to walk into class late. My teacher gets irritated because I miss instruction and then has to go over everything all over again. I know this all from experience. When winter comes, the bus is late and that affects all the kids on our bus. We could get late, we could get sick or get frostbite. The bus being late also affects our safety. I trust you've all heard of Elizabeth and Lyric. The longer we are there, the more vulnerable we are to people like the men or women that took them. I think it is also a bad example for the kids because it isn't showing them responsibility by being on time. The kids see the bus be late over and over without consequences and think, oh, if it's okay that the bus driver is late that many times without consequences, then it's okay for me to be late too. But realistically, that's not the case. It's like if one of my teachers was late to work a lot. Dr. Cox, my principal, will get more and more irritated as time goes on. When the bus is late, I feel stressed for the whole day because I am worried about being late for all my classes. I'm also worried because I will have a lot of work to catch up on and then I usually have homework if I don't get normal classwork done, on top of assigned homework. When I have to wait for about 15 minutes more than what I should, I get nervous and agitated. Finally, I think the bus barns should train their bus drivers more because then they can go on their routes more efficiently. If they do that, then we all get to school on time and the kids are safer.
Thank you.
She's a hard act to follow. My name is Heather Smith. I am Elizabeth's mother and I live at 1634 Liberty. The issue that I would like to draw to your attention is the services that the children of this district are receiving from Durin Transportation Services. I'm here to bring this matter to your attention from two different perspectives, as a teacher and as a mother. As a teacher, I frequently see buses full of students across grade levels arrive late. I've been keeping track of the number of buses that have arrived late at our school alone and it has averaged to be at least one bus a week. That means that at least 40 or more students are arriving to school late and those students who are eating breakfast are arriving to the classroom even later. It's not uncommon for students who are arriving on a late bus to come in 15 minutes late for school in the mornings. Many classrooms hold morning meetings at the beginning of the day, meaning that the late students have missed a review of expectations and a rundown of what to expect for the day. Review of expectations is a key component to PBIS, which many kids are missing. The students who struggle with transitions come in late, which is a disruption to their schedule and sets a negative tone for the rest of their day that is hard to shake in order for their day to go positively. Kids who are already struggling do not need anything else to get their day started off on a bad foot. We teachers are held accountable for students' performance on test scores and data is heavily considered on an ongoing basis. How can I be held accountable for the scores and the data, or, excuse me, how can I be held accountable for the success of a student who is coming in late because their buses arrived late or did not pick them all, pick them up at all, which is the case this morning with a student in my class? He arrived at 9:15, which is 25 minutes late for instruction. And he missed the entire launch of my math lesson. How am I to be held accountable for a child who has stood out in the cold and the rain and comes to school drenched because the bus was late picking them up and stood there waiting and now have to take additional time out of their classroom day to get changed into dry clothes? And what about the buses that arrive 10 to 15 minutes late at the end of the school day to take them home? In light of recent events of attempted abductions and actual abductions, a child who is unaccounted for for 15 to 20 minutes or more is a terrifying experience for a parent who is waiting for their child on the other end. We receive many phone calls on a weekly basis from panicked or upset parents wondering where their child is, yet we still expect the staff to complete their regularly assigned duties on top of answering multiple phone calls from worried parents and then have to get ahold of the bus garage and track the child down. The fact that buses are late cannot be disputed. I've been a teacher for going on 12 years in this district. Late buses are a given, but I can certainly say that the frequency of the tardy buses has greatly increased in the school year since the switch of service providers. What kind of an example are we setting for our youth when we excuse tardiness over and over again? In a recent conversation with a company that I had myself, I was told that it is due to inadequate trained, inadequately trained sub-drivers or drivers who are not from this area. Do teachers get to use that excuse for not doing our jobs? I don't think so. We are still obligated to meet the needs of our students, whether we are a permanent teacher or a substitute. The excuse of inadequacy holds no water with parents in terms of instructional quality, nor should it in terms of the quality of the transportation of our students.
Thank you.
I do, I just want to add that my children have on more than one occasion waited 20 minutes or more, up until 45 minutes, on the street corner waiting for a late bus.
Okay.
And that's not, that's not okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Please step forward.
I'm Mike Knapp. And when I'm not delivering American flags with the Exchange Club, I'm the director of Gritten Girl Childcare in Town. And I just wanted to express our agency's appreciation and continued commitment to providing the voluntary preschool program with the, with the district. And we've been working with Charleetta and, and her people since the voluntary preschool program was established and we look forward to continuing to work with the schools.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay, well, hearing none, we'll check in again on the coaches as well. And I know the busing issues are being, much time and effort is going into correcting those things we need to correct.
Absolutely.
Okay, if there's nobody else, we'll move to the next item on our board agenda, which tonight is the consent agenda, which consists of the, first, the minutes of the October 8th regular school board meeting two weeks ago, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last school board meeting, bills due and payable between board meetings, destruction of audio tapes and minutes of board closed sessions, these are things like expulsion hearings, confidential records, superintendent evaluation, real estate, educational placement of students, those sorts of things from 2010 to 2011. Then board member travel for the Iowa Association of School Board Conventions and then the Urban Education Network. And then also high school visits and the Cedar Valley Coalition trip, which I think this year's in April. And then finally, also on the consent agenda is student travel for the 21st Century High School Task Force. And at this point in time, I need, which we're missing saying Andrea Sparks, a board member, is not here, but it's, not because she's doing something else, she's on a, a school board trip with the High School Task Force. She is in Florida right now for that group. But that's a consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members wish to be removed?
Item F, Foxtrot, please.
Okay. Personnel appointments and adjustments. Anything else? If not, I'll ask that Exhibit G on page 21, bills due and payable between board meetings be removed. All right, hearing no others, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items F and G.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Exhibit F. It's on page 19 of your board packet, bills due and payable between board meetings. And, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, personnel appointments and adjustments, excuse me. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed in our board packet. So moved. Okay. Thank you. Moved and seconded. In discussion.
Is the coaching area, just, just caught my attention and if the rest of the board agrees, I'd be kind of interested in a, maybe a total accounting of, of all the coaches and assistant coaches and the number of students involved. I'm glad to see and hear assistant theater, so, and this would include all extracurricular activities. I think extracurricular is, extracurricular activities isn't so much extra as integral to everything we, we, you know, the experience that we provide students. And I've kind of lost track of how all this fits together. And I know we have, or I think there's still maybe a outstanding item on the whole coaching, if I remember right, Dr. Norris. Something is forthcoming, I think, anyway. But, but I guess I would like it to include all the assistance and all the, all the amount of money. I think it's money well spent, but I'd still like to see a summary of, of all extracurricular activities on the same page somewhere.
Are you, just to make sure we get what you need, are you talking about the personnel that are committed to each of those?
Yeah.
Okay, you're not talking about what a coach spends on uniforms at this point?
No, no.
Just personnel right now?
Just the personnel and particularly the participation level. How many students?
Personnel and participation.
Twenty-eight people out for bullying, there's an assistant and a head coach.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we'll, we'll have a better appreciation for, there's more than we, we think, which is a good thing, I think.
Sure.
But it's just, isn't commonly, it isn't known by me.
Mrs. Turner and Dr. Smith both like collaborating together to come up with reports. They, they love it.
You know, and I'm not asking for a lot of extra work, just, just a little.
Just what we have. Yeah, sure.
And I just wondered, Bev, as far as, did we add another section of first grade?
Yes.
Bev's not feeling well, it's why she's hanging by the door.
Sorry. That's okay. Yes, we did add another section at Irving, supported by PLA S. funds.
Great, excellent. Great.
Okay. Go home, Dr. Smith.
You wouldn't have to walk up here to say that.
Go home.
And I guess I would just add, I appreciate these people taking the, the extra challenge of, of those assignments because it isn't, you know, it isn't really a lot of money and it's.
It's not lucrative.
It's usually a lot of time, but these tend to be very passionate about it and, and many are very good, so.
And I have another question on that. It's not actually a personnel, now that, but I was at conferences and there are some positions that, like, this was at West specifically, that this teacher is the head of like honor society and, and the prom committee and this committee, and they get.
Stipends.
Yeah. But I wondered as far as how much does that go to them or does it go to the program or how that works?
We can, we can put that in the report, absolutely.
Okay.
So you're asking for those that are more or less voluntary positions as well?
Yeah.
Which I think.
Yeah. Because like, one of the teachers expressed to me that she was going to give it up this year and nobody was going to take it over and so she just couldn't do that to the kids and not have it. You know what I mean? So appreciating those.
And go ahead and include the math counts coaches.
I figured that.
The what?
Math counts.
That was, that was without saying.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. And then the next item on the agenda is Exhibit G. It's on the next page, on page 21. This is regarding bills due and payable. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
Moved to approve.
Thank you. In a second. Okay.
And I had one question on that. Michael, there was a check, I guess it's on page number five and actually page 26, to Sherwin Williams with the check number for zero. That doesn't really happen, does it? It was to Sherwin Williams. It's about a third of the way down. My best answer that I can give you without double checking it is it was something that[1797.21]
My best answer that I can give you without double checking it is it was something that we had a bill for and also had a credit.
Okay.
So to process that, it did produce a zero check, but then it cleared all the invoices.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none. For clarification, I will abstain from voting on this matter, because as an attorney, representing a client, it's paid by one of the bills. So, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The chair abstains, motion carried. And that takes us to Exhibit K on page 38, and this is regarding student enrollment by building and grade level. And it's for information only, but we have in our board packet on page 39, the enrollment by building for this school year, with our certified enrollment date. And this for discussion, whether it was Mrs. Turner or Mr. Coffin. Cora Turner's coming to the podium to discuss this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We wanted to report overall our increase in enrollment for 84.34 students this year. I think the district, as you see, is totally improving in enrollment numbers. You can see elementary's up quite a bit, and that's a positive. You can also look at your pre-K numbers and saw, see that our pre-K enrollment programs are also showing a great increase over the district. As we continue to look at the numbers daily, we find, you know, a couple of students that's here or there, and if they, we find it there, theirs, we go after them, so we're very pleased with our enrollment numbers this year.
And it looked like, just from the article, that the open enrollment numbers going out are down and the open enrollment coming in are up.
That is correct.
Which is a great thing.
That is correct. I think a lot of the new programming and just the information that the community and surrounding communities are hearing about our district is very positive, and students are wanting to come within our district.
Cora, with the pre-K, do we maintain those students after, when they enter kindergarten, most, the majority of those students?
At least I really feel that we do, because for the last four years, we've been, had an increase in elementary numbers. So that's, that's been a big plus for us. Because this year, we're up a total of 137 students, so.
Great.
I guess, just an observation, you know, we say our schools are designed for 450, and that was based on 75, the elementaries I'm talking about right now, 75 kids per grade, so K-1, 2 would have 18 and three quarters on average, and 3, 4, 5 would have 25. If we look at our actual class sizes, it's a bit more than that. So as I view these schools, you know, as a matter of fact, if you had 21, for example, in K-1, 2, and 28 in 3, 4, 5, you end up with 84 kids per grade instead of 75. So I look at it as a range of 450 to whatever that is, 504, I think. And most of our schools are in that range, pretty close to it, and I'm accepting right now Kingsley and, or I derated Kingsley and Lowell, because they're, they're three, two-section schools as opposed to four slash three. In any event, there's really four schools that kind of stand out here that are way over or way under. Two way over, Kingsley at 88 over, and, and Lou Henry at 56 over, and then under Cunningham at 75 under, and Lincoln at, at 47 under, outside that range. So I guess, and then overall, we're only, the new seats we've got in elementary by design would be in that, if you use the, even if you use the 504 number, would be, I think, 52, 56. Maybe I didn't add in the new orange. But anyway, we're within 250 students of maxing out our elementaries, and this year, if everybody, if last year's, if the new sixth grade was last year's fifth grade, we had 949 come into kindergarten, 710 go to sixth grade, so you've got a 240 student differential. So my point is, within one year, maybe two, if this trend continues, we're going to be flat out full, at least overflowing in some cases, and so we probably need to address particularly the two schools that are considerably under. So we're going to be forced to utilize those resources before we expand beyond our current building plan, I think. And so I'm not sure why those schools are that much under, or what the solutions are, I'm just, just, it's just, it's just a point that's an outlier. Both those numbers are outliers, and I think we need to, I don't know if it's the special programs that are there, they both happen to have special programs. I think both of them have, at least one of them has voluntary transfer numbers out of the attendance area that are pretty high. So anyway, I think it warrants a little closer look before, before we get into, well, like I say, within a year or two, if this trend continues, and hopefully it does, we're going to be, we're going to have filled all our new elementary schools. So I think we need to explore why, why a couple of them are, are way under capacity. Just a thought.
Going along with that, I would have a question as to Orange. We are going to be able to handle more students in the new school there, so is, when that happens, will there be some shifting then of the elementary levels or attendance areas?
At that time, I believe we will give students an option to go into our new school, yes.
Okay. Would there be preference to some of them in, within the vicinity, or would it be more by current over, over the amount, you know, when you've got 521 and 560 in schools that were made for 450?
I'm quite sure that would be one of our general discussions as we begin closer to open Orange. At this time, I can't say for sure, yes, how the plan would be, but clearly, we look at those numbers daily also, and look at the class sizes.
And of course, the wild card there is how our hands are tied with no child left behind and how that evolves. Hopefully, we'll have more freedom to control our own.
There's only three tools that a board and a superintendent have to make adjustments in any of this. One is boundaries, two is busing, and three is the federal law. And so we can't control the federal law, but we can control, to a limited extent, the others. And I'm infinitely glad that, that the board voted to add 200 additional seats at, at Orange. Thank you.
Are the pre-K classes counted in that number at Lincoln and Cunningham?
No, no, they aren't.
So they do have-
They're separate.
Okay, so that will account for some of the space using those buildings.
We, we already have moved pre-K out of there. They're already using the pre-K rooms.
Yeah, okay. And Cora, what are the other programs for, under high school, East-West, Expo-Star-C, WebC, and other programs?
That's our Grad Connect program.
Yeah.
That's our program that focuses on students' credit recovery, those individuals that we have in our buildings daily. Which are great programs and assist us greatly in our graduation rate.
Yeah. So like the mall classes would be-
The mall class would be another program. And speaking of that, I did have two young people contact me that have heard about it that's very interested in attending the mall classroom. They actually work within the class, the crossroad setting, and they see that as an advantage, is being able to go there and continue and complete their credits, so-
Get their degrees.
We're excited about getting that opening up.
I know it's been a lot of work by people with, with that, doing different things, the Reconnect, Graduate Program. There's been a lot going on. Seeing this, it's, attendance is always an issue, I think at every school, it probably always has been, but seeing the general tends of, we've had growth three of the last four years-
Yes.
Is a good thing. It's a, it's a positive thing in general for the district.
Yes, it is.
Thank you for all the work you're doing, and your staff in particular, so-
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Mrs. Turner. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. I believe that's information only. The next item on our agenda is also for information only, and this is the first reading for a board policy change. We'll vote on it at our regular meeting in two weeks, but we've got one policy that's in our board packet now on Exhibit L on page 40, regarding the school district job description. And it's being presented for deletion, because it, I believe it has been, no longer applies. Dr. Smith is here.
Well, and at the Policy Review Committee, all, all the applications are online. So this is just somewhat redundant-
A little bit antiquated?
Yes.
So we've already got this covered.
All of the other job descriptions are online now at the online site, and this one came up for review, so was that, that time that they did, we asked to move that to online? It doesn't, it's not a policy anymore. If you recall, at one time, all of our job descriptions were policies.
Okay. And it looks like this goes back to 1996, so I guess things have changed since 1996. Right, thank you, Dr. Smith.
Ryle was there.
Ryle was about that.
Some of us can remember that.
One of us can remember that.
I hate doing that.
You might remember 1996.
That's true. Should really remember that.
Any further questions or discussions on this item? If not, we'll move on. We've got two financial reports, the first of which is Exhibit N, and this is up for a vote, and it concerns the school district's certified annual report, and it's on Exhibit M on page 45. And we'll turn it over in a moment to Mr. Cofflin, but the recommended motion is that the Board of Education place on file the certified annual report as required by the Iowa Department of Education.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second.
Second.
Okay, and Mr. Cofflin, if you could, give us some background information on this item.
Before I do get into that, I just wanted to verify, looking at the detail of the Sherwin-Williams issue, is that's exactly what it was, a credit in and an invoice, so it did net to zero.
But a good catch.
Good question, though. Starting on page 47 is the certified annual report that the district has to submit every year. Every district has to submit every year, and this has been a transition of procedure as time has gone by. You've talked about people remembering things from the past, and I remember doing this early in my career with a pencil and paper on green bar paper and erasing holes in the paper, getting everything right. This is now set up that all of the account numbers have to be exactly right, in the right format, matching with the right object to the right function, that everything is properly coded, and then it's all uploaded into the state, and they produce the report. So it is also as the DE gains capability with this, they can now break it down a little farther than they used to. So they are continually examining our records to make sure they are consistent with their requirements, the state requirements, and continuity with other districts across the state. So we're all reporting it in the same manner, in the same way. I'm just going to go through and review what is on each of the pages. I have gone through most of these numbers before in your monthly reports, but I'll just show you how this report is set up, and if you've got any questions, you can stop me along the way. Page 48 is a breakdown of all the revenues by type along the left-hand side, local, state, federal sources, and then each fund across the top, so that's all-inclusive of all of our funds. The balance sheet then addresses all of our condition of the district by assets, liabilities, our fund equity. I did want to point out lines 27 through 30, 31, in the general fund on that. We are showing a restricted fund balance of $1,097. That is money that is committed to a grant, committed to special ed, committed to a special resource that has to be spent that way, so that's why they call it restricted. It's still our money, but will be used for that in particular. The committed fund balance is 7.2 million. Well, a million of that is the savings that was generated in the interim, interim premiums of the insurance plan, and the six and a half million, roughly 6.3 above that, is the action that the board took a year ago to just set aside that amount of balance in this, in this account for budget control and study as we went forward. So really, 6.2 million of that 7.2 is available money. It has just been set aside in there until the board takes action to use it. So then 30, the unassigned, is only showing at 342,000, but it really is that number plus 6.2 million. We've just recategorized it for the way that we are operating our, our budget approvals process.
So all the, all these numbers are the June 30th final report numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
They all have been subject to the audit. We don't have the final audit report done, but I'm not expecting change in any of these. If it is, it would be very minor. So the balance sheet by each of the funds goes across on page 49. 50 is all of the expenditures by function or program down the left-hand side, and then by salary benefit and so on. That's a report that you see on a monthly basis. It just breaks down how the general fund is. And I noticed on page 51, that's just a duplicate of that page, so you can just go past. But what I did want to put in there was, of course, you can run that report for every fund, but there's very few numbers on most of those reports, so I didn't include that in here. Really, the official pages, page that I need to present is page 52, which all the funds are together. So it's got every fund involved with that, but for your reference, I broke out the general fund, because that's the majority of our spending. But if you, if you would like to see the detail of any of the other funds, I'd be happy to provide that for you. Page 53 is the report that you saw in the annual report. It's basically showing the beginning fund balance, not the authorized balance, not the cash balance, the fund balance for the books, basically assets minus liabilities and with fund equity, and that's what's left, the 8.6 million in the general fund. And as you go across, it shows basically the ending value of each of the funds as of June 30th. Another report on page 54 is what's called miscellaneous income, and that is the number on, on line 12. This is basically saying everything that isn't property tax and isn't under the formula for state aid, all the grants, all the local revenue, that gives you an amount, which is a very important amount as we budget from year to year. So they did make that a specific report after there was some struggles with that to get the right one on a statewide basis, so it is a report now. At the bottom of that, I did want to give you a, just point out the calculation that the state uses for the ability for the district to levy cash reserve. And by that formula, we could levy a little over 23, $23 million, and we levy about between three and four. So we are a long cry away from the capability that we have for that, but that's a formula that they put in there just for reference. Page 55 is kind of the opposite way of looking at the fund balance. What, the way we got to it before was assets and liabilities and, and fund equity. This is revenues and expenditures, taking the beginning, adding the revenues minus the expenditures, and you get the same number on line 38 for all the different funds. So they call it the crosswalk. It's another way of looking at how all, how that balance is generated. Page 56 is a very abbreviated transportation report. Our numbers are pretty few categories, because we do hire a service. So instead of saying salaries and, and benefits and so on, if we follow these people who are employees, the majority of our cost is in the purchase service that we pay to the company to run the bus. to run the buses. Um, again, this is another one of these efforts to try and get all the districts in the state to report transportation in a similar way. Um, so it's just a, a measure by the state to attempt to do that. Um, fifty-seven is a balance sheet of all of our long-term fixed assets, our buildings, our land, our equipment, uh, so on, and we're showing at two hundred and nineteen million dollars worth of property, long-term assets, and the sixty-nine million is the total principal and interest debt that is now, uh, current with the district of paying back the revenue bonds, paying back the QSCB. Uh, so that's the comparison between what we own and what we owe. So those are the reports for what we call the CAR. Um, but going on to page fifty-eight, part of the CAR, which is also under the same criteria that it all has to be, uh, done by, uh, proper account numbers and such, is the special ed. And when you think about our budget being about a hundred and eighteen million and special ed being around twenty-seven million, that's a considerable amount of money, part of our budget, that is run by, that is controlled by special ed. Um, I don't have the exact number, um, but our special ed budget exceeds, uh, about three-fourths of the districts in the state for a budget. So that's, when you do comparatively, uh, it's a significant program within our larger budget. So what I wanted to just show you, uh, is the, the schedules that go along with that. Um, page fifty-nine is a list by district of all the students that we tuition out. There's about three hundred and seventy-four students, um, by bodies that go out. I don't have the FTE. Most of them are full-time, but, um, this is what we pay other districts to educate special ed children, that tuition out to other districts. So it's a significant amount of money for that. On page sixty, this is the resident students, and those are the students that generate the money. It's just like an enrollment count that Cora went through, uh, for the district from year to year. This is the count for the special ed students. Um, and the numbers, um, eighteen forty-three, and it goes from the previous year again. It's a year behind. So what we counted a year ago is eighteen forty-three in student, in special ed students. Uh, one thing that's a little interesting is the, the, uh, line of numbers right below that in the middle of the page where it says, "Special ed program," or "Students served in the district's special ed program for at least one day during the school year." And we've actually, last year, had twenty-two-hundred-and-five students actually be served in the district. Some of them there were for a few days, some of them there were for a, a long period of time. Um, but we only generated money for eighteen hundred and forty-three kids. Um, but it's a year ago. So you see the, the difference of what we have to deal with of the students that actually show up in the chairs and the, and the revenue coming from a year behind.
What would be a typical short-duration scenario?
I don't know if I can answer that.
Some kind of, uh, temporary placement or, um, they're, I'm guessing some evaluation or, um...
Sometimes they're just in the process of moving, and they move in, and then a month later, they move out. Page sixty-one is then the, uh, other side of the, the ledger where these are the districts that send students to Waterloo. So these are all what we call the tuition-in students, um, that we bill the other districts for. Um, about twenty-six students, as I you look at the table on the bottom. On page sixty-two, then you take the enrollment numbers and you generate the amount of money that they, the amount of revenue that they produce, and for two thousand and twelve, it was twenty-five million, four hundred and three thousand, plus a carryover, one point four million. So we have just a little under twenty-seven million for a budget for special ed. Um, on page sixty-three, we also generate money through the Medicaid reimbursement, and I don't know all the categories for that, but there's, uh, I know nursing services, um, that we can, it used to be transportation, and I don't know all of the, um, ins and outs of that, uh, in particular, but we are able to then, uh, submit that time to the Medicaid system. And last year, um... I'm talking about the wrong form. Okay. Let's go to sixty-three. This is the federal money that we get through IDEA, um, that is used for, uh, PBIS program is partly used for that. We use it for some efforts, uh, because our district has been labeled as disproportionate in, um, the number of how some of the minority students are served, and I really can't go into a detail more than that. But we use federal money, um, in these programs to address those issues. It's about, um, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand of the year, and the other numbers in that, uh, was the finish-up of the, uh, federal stimulus money that came in under this program, and this was one-time dollars that we used. Over a couple of years, we got one point eight million dollars, and we use that to put technology in every one of the special ed classrooms. Now, on sixty-four is the Medicaid. These are the services that we are, uh, that we perform, that then we can turn in to the Medicaid system and get reimbursed. Um, and net, after we paid for the provider to process the claims, NDHS, um, gets about twenty-six percent, I believe, of that, um, of those claims. We still netted a little over nine hundred thousand of revenue coming in to offset expenditures. Um, now, this has been a, a work in progress. Um, when I came five years ago, we were under three hundred thousand in Medicaid reimbursements. Um, it has been built up. Um, we're now at this stage of, uh, nine hundred thousand. We believe that identifying, uh, more issues that we will increase that amount significantly again. And then what that does is just allow us to provide more services that can be offset by this revenue. Um, so it really is a benefit. Uh, it's a direct revenue source to offset, uh, expenditures for the program, which then allows you to provide more services. Um, page sixty-five, uh, again, is just a, a brief summary of some, of the vehicles we use that are designated for special ed besides, uh, yellow school buses, and there's a formula that we report mileage for, uh, those buses as far as applying transportation to special ed. And I would like to hand you a corrected sheet for page sixty-six, because even after you send in and confirm everything that has happened for the year and you go out and run the report again, salary and benefits and all of those didn't show up. So sometimes there, sometimes technology surprises you. Um, so this would be the, uh, the, um, repeat to page sixty-six, uh, or the substitute, the replacement to page sixty-six, and the top half of this shows all the revenues that come in, uh, that we covered, um, basically from the, um, count of enrollment for tuition-in. Uh, we get some claims for, um, foster care, high-cost claims, the Medicaid reimbursement, and we also get the teacher quality or the teacher salary supplement money, uh, that goes to all of our teachers, um, and of course, the special ed teachers as well. So that is divided out. Um, so, um, in the middle of the page, total revenue that came in for the special ed program was twenty-eight point nine million dollars. So it's a little bit over the twenty-seven that we get just through the formula. Um, then it goes into the salary and benefits by the weightings, uh, level one, two, and three. So you can see how the, uh, costs are distributed, and we do distribute those, um, by as close a method that we can. It used to be that we would just pick a day in the fall and say, "How many teachers, how many kids does each teacher have of a specific level?" And then we kinda divvy out the costs by level. Well, that was not, uh, entirely appropriate, and it changes, and there really wasn't a measure that the federal government was satisfied with. So we actually set aside all of the expenses during the year into an account that then is divided by the actual enrollment of each level. Um, so we get an actual allocation of costs to the students that are at each level. And that's a conversion that we do at the end of the year to re, to take all of the costs and then divide them into the three levels based on the enrollment for each of the, of the students. So we have the, the basic costs of the, of the salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, and so on. Um, the SBRC approval for administrative costs. We did get approval for a hundred and twenty-five thousand of our administrative costs to be applied to special ed. Um, so our subtotal was nineteen point six million, and then we add in there what's called general program expenditures. Um, tho, that is what you would call the overhead of serving them as a one-point-oh student. So there's going to be the, and that's where the administrative cost would come in, uh, would be calculated. So there is a formula that divides that by the number of students by the weighting. So that's five point five million. Um, then contracted services of tuition, which we showed on one of the first pages, was the tuition out, um, is a little over five million. Um, DE adjustments, uh, is what, one of the things that happens with all of this switching back and forth of tuition is some people send out a bill and then, "Oh, it wasn't quite right," and the, and the DE does some adjusting back and forth. And I'm not so sure that wasn't why my page didn't come out right at first printing, because this now is the first time I've seen these numbers. So they are dealing with our file and making, uh, some of those changes based on some of the adjustments to the other districts. So total expenditures were twenty-nine, uh, million nine hundred and ninety-four compared to twenty-eight, nine forty-six million of revenues. So we overspent the current revenue, um, allocation by just over a million dollars. Now, I do wanna take you back to page fifty-eight, because this is a summary of our carryover balance, because year to year, we are able to carry ten percent of our allocation forward. Um, last year, we carried one point four million. We overspent this year's allocation by a million. So we're still carrying a four hundred thousand dollar positive balance. Now, the question comes in of saying, "Well, if we're on that pace of overspending, aren't we going to be way overspent in thirteen?" And what I told you about Medicaid is we have a lot more opportunity to offset some of the expenditures with additional Medicaid. So we believe we will stay relatively in that same amount, around half a million dollars of carryover, um, with all of those aspects put into the equation. And that, but that's something that we're watching very carefully, and we will measure that as we go through the year. But that's the expectation right now.
In, in the calculation of the general program expenditures, uh, did I understand you, if you, say, say you have a school and it's got, just for talking purposes, a hundred students, regular students, and ten special students, all right? And say each of the ten special students had a three point seven four. So that would count for thirty-seven point four students. So do you add, would the principal's, uh, salary, for example, be divided by then a hundred and thirty-seven point four?
No. The prin, the administrative costs for special education cannot be appli, cannot be applied to special ed dollars. You're going to have to administer that student anyway. It's regardless of whether he's special ed or not.
You, I think you mean building dollars can't, but district, district administration could be. Is that what you're saying?
Ask me the question again, then, if I'm...
Well, I was, you, you categorize it as general, characterize it as general overhead, which would be all the administrative salaries in my mind, included in general overhead, would it not?
It's, it's not based on the district's overhead. It's based on a special ed student. How much of that student is assigned to the one-point-oh weighting? So if you look at, um, a student that's a level one, mildly disabled, he's mainly a one-point-oh student. So more of the calculation of those one-point-oh dollars go toward that. And then as you get to the higher one, the expense of a hi, of a, of a level-three student is mainly all special ed dollars, and there's a lesser amount that goes toward the one-point-oh. It's based on the, the special ed students and their, um, discipline or their weighting that calculates that general, um, expenditure. It's not how we would look at the whole population and, and go from that direction into special ed.
What's the scope of the general program expenditures that you're proportioning?
A level-one student is in the general classroom quite a bit.
But no, what's the, what's the co, the general budget?
Fifty-eight hundred and eighty dollars is what we get per student in a general. So you're talking about, Lyle, the, the three million and the five million there?
Yeah, where did the five?
Those are the number, total number of special ed kids we have times fifty-eight, eighty-five.
Oh, this was last year, yeah.
I believe.
The general purpose?
Yeah.
It's not. They don't, uh, a one-point-oh student, about eighty percent, or a, a level-one student, about eighty percent of that student is attributed to being a, a regular one-point-oh student.
Oh, okay, eighty percent, okay.
The level-two, and I can't pull these numbers, I think it's thirty-six percent. A level-three is twenty-eight percent. So it depends on the actual weighting of the student that generates that general program expenditure cost.
So you're taking the receipts as a beginning point?
Yes, the money that they generate.
And deciding how much of that goes back into the general fund?
By state code.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not something we have any control over whatsoever. They're assigned by the state.
As the weighting goes up, the percentage goes down.
Yeah, because they're saying they need more special education attention.
Less general.
So it's less regular programming that they get.
Okay, Michael, um, the page fifty-nine, as far as the special ed students served in other districts, can you explain how that works? Like, for instance, Sioux City or, um, Esteville, uh, is this our home, their home district is Waterloo, but they're going there for services?
There can be a lot of different situations with this, and the rule of thumb is the parents get their way. And if they are a student and they want their student because they used to live in Sioux, in Sioux Falls, Sioux City, they like that program, they want them to continue there, they will do that. They have the right to do that.
The student has to live in Sioux City, right?
What's that?
No.
The student's here.
The student lives in Waterloo.
The student is a Waterloo resident.
Waterloo, but they're saying, "We want our special ed services provided to us from Mains and Northwest Webster."
Many times, just so you know, they're, they're court-ordered placements or different types of services, and if they're a special needs child, they may be in Clorinda or, um, I'm trying to think, Fort Dodge. I'm trying to think of some of the different placements. So sometimes they're a different, yeah.
But if, if, on the other hand, uh, if we have a program available here, they can't just automatically, so these would be programs that aren't usually available in our district.
Right. So like, what would Cedar Falls? Right, so like, what would Cedar Falls have? It seems like that's a really high proportionate number, six-hundred-and-four.
A significant portion of those are actually open-enrolled students, but they're open-enrolled that have, happen to be special ed. So they've chosen to go there on open enrollment, but they're a special ed student.
An example would be a student who recently is in their, maybe their senior year of high school, has moved to Waterloo. We were given the option of the student remaining in Cedar Falls, or the student coming to Waterloo, chose to finish the placement program, River Hills would be an example.
In Cedar Falls, but then, because I just, it just seemed like that's pretty high, because with the AEA being three-point-five million.
Try to keep, keep in mind the flow-proof dollars, so they're not dollars that we would be getting, we get, we get, the state, it's kind of a bill all the way through, it's not dollars that we would ever touch to be able to spend, definitely, it would be that same cost for us to educate our child.
Right, right.
Sue, the AEA dollars are primarily Castle Hill. They're a program that we have sanctioned AEA to run, and then we've, we've paid them the money.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Okay.
I just have to say, I know Michael's staff, Michael, you and your staff, the amount of effort to do this, not only once, but then to turn around and do it again for special ed, and I know that the Medicare thing, it's, I'm very glad that we've been able to capture those funds, and some of that's, all of that's due to your staff being able to better identify that, and so, thank you, because this kind of detail stuff, obviously, that's what we do with numbers, but this would not be an easy form to deal with.
But in fairness, we have a lot involved with it, but it really is then working with special ed, and working with ed services, and working with HR. We all do this to try and, try and pinpoint these efforts and come up with this altogether, so it's not a one-person show by any stretch.
No, but thank, as we were going through this, I, I thought of that as well, but also the fact that these numbers, sometimes getting into them and seeing them all at once, it gets a little bit overwhelming, but the bottom line is, it didn't seem like there were any surprises in this, and that's a good thing, and so, yeah, we do appreciate the work you're doing. It's better to go through this, not have any major questions or see anything, rather than seeing a bunch of red flags, so, thank you for what you're doing. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That's our last action item on the agenda. We also have, Michael, we don't mean to put you on the spot again, and this is for information only, there's monthly financial information on page sixty-nine, exhibit N in the board packet. Is there anything special that you wanted to point out in this?
The last time that I presented, we talked a little bit about a relationship of budget from twelve to thirteen, and how we had kept, our instructional staff kept things intact, and the very legitimate question that came out is, then, why isn't your budget for salaries higher than what it's showing? Have done some preliminary work on that, and have made some adjustments to it as I'm studying that more, but there was a couple of things that happened with that, that there was some one-time expenditures at the end of twelve that boosted the salaries up a little higher than originally expected with the budget.
Is that like the thirty hours for teachers?
Yep.
That, yeah.
Yep, that got...
That's a huge one.
Yep. So as you look at page seventy-three, and you look at the budget in thirteen compared to the actual of twelve, they're showing about a, oh, two-point-six-million-dollar change from salaries from one year, from twelve to thirteen. There's a lot of factors that go into that. Again, basically, what had happened in twelve, and what we're expecting to happen in thirteen, that will be continued to be studied as, and monitored as we go along, because then that does have a very poignant effect on budgeting for fourteen, which we are going to be doing rather shortly. The other thing that I hadn't put in to the exhibits last time was seventy-five, where I brought you up to date on where we're at on the three other major funds, management, PEPAL, and capital projects. And then I gave you a different look at the graph on page seventy-six. Rather than putting all of those funds together and trying to decipher out the trend of individual funds, I separated them. So just looking at Fund Ten at the top, the line in the background is the cash flow for twelve. So you can see where we're sitting this year, a little bit below where we were a year ago. And this also, as you see, the text box in there that says the balance is just under three million, but there's another two-point-seven borrowed out. So the real position of the general fund, if we were not borrowing to the capital projects fund, would be to those two numbers added together, and would be a lot closer to where we were a year ago. So that's what you can see as you look at this, the management fund is in the same condition until property tax kicks in, we're a little lower than we were a year ago. The sales tax fund, it is showing a positive balance of six-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, but that's because we've borrowed, borrowed two-point-seven million of it from the general fund to help that cash flow. And then PEPAL, they had a lot of expenditures during the summer because of roofing projects and so on, so until the property tax comes in, that's showing a negative position too, but that will correct itself in the next month or so.
Just curious, when do the property taxes get paid? Does that come from the county treasurer?
We get those in October.
Okay.
So you'll see a significant change to this. If you look at the graphs from the year before, the line, the trend line, you'll see that it jumps significantly in October.
And then goes down.
Yep.
Okay, any questions or anything? Okay, hearing none, that concludes the action items on our agenda. The next item, then, is the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Norris.
I was going to address Elizabeth, but I see she stepped out of the room, so would some of the rest of you like to, wait just a second. Hi, Elizabeth. I just want to, I want to thank Elizabeth for getting up and reading her statement about, about the busing. You did a very nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to tell you that I did know about the issues at Hoover, Mr. Cox and Mr. Fisher have been keeping me very much informed, they've told me, and we have experienced some issues this year with busing, and I've been in touch with the main offices of the bus company that are not here in Waterloo, they're in Chicago, and I've expressed many of the things you expressed tonight, and they're working with us, and I think over the next few days to few weeks, I think it's going to get better. So there, I just wanted you to know that I knew about it, and nothing's more important to me than you getting to school on time, and also your safety, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you come back in like, three weeks and tell us how it is? Let us know.
For him.
Do that? Thank you.
You may have to sit through another board meeting, though, and sometimes they're, when we're going over financial records, it's a little, it's a bit much.
It's a little bad, boy.
All right, thank you, Dr. Norris. Information from board members, and I'll start with Lyle Schmidt.
I don't have anything additional.
Thank you. Michael Kinsey.
Yes, I have visited a couple of the school buildings, visited East High, Lincoln, and Pointer today, as a matter of fact, as Michael also attended that meeting, but just, it's been a very eye-opening to us as board members to hear some of the things that are said, and there are some things that definitely need attention, but there are also some things to be very proud of in these meetings that is discussed, so I'm glad that I'm able to do that, and hope to get to more of these meetings. Also, we're also doing some traveling to high schools around the country, as a matter of fact, and that is also giving us some very good information as to how best to serve our students in the future, and what's going to work best for educating high school and, as well as middle school, and potentially, elementaries in the future, so that's also been very good, and for those who attended, it's not just board members, there are parents and staff and administration that also attend these meetings and gatherings, so we hope to bring you some more information within the coming months as to the direction we would like to go with those issues. We are all very busy, but with full-time jobs, as most of the board members are involved with, it's not always easy to make trips to school to visit staff and students, so bear with us that we will try and visit schools a little bit more here this winter, and keep abreast of how things are going with the school classrooms and administration as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Bernice Richard.
No report.
Thank you. Sue Flynn.
I just wanted to say congratulations to East High and West High football teams, both making the playoffs. Hopefully, they will perform well Wednesday night, a good showing for the district, and most of all, be good sports, so just kudos to the coaches and the athletes for those two schools and teams, and the West High cross-country team, the entire team made the state tournament, so all their runners will be running this Saturday, so congratulations.
Thank you, Sue. And Shanley McNally.
Parent-teacher conferences were last week on Tuesday evening and Thursday. I just want to thank our staff for being available. I know it's important that our teachers can communicate with our parents, and I think that taking the time to do that, as our parents did to get in, is really important. I just want to urge those parents, if for some reason you weren't able to get to conferences, make sure you reach out to your child's teacher, there's nobody that, you know, can help you with what's going on in the classroom better than that, so, anyway, thanks to everybody for participating in those.
Also, I went into, I thought Shanley might have had on it, the music programs that both East and West had their all-state additions over the weekend, and we had East High, a couple, one student in choir, and I think percussion orchestra made all-state, and this is like, one percent in the whole state, these kids make it, and West High, I think they had seven between orchestra and band that made it. So excellent job to those music programs at both East and West.
Oh, great, oh, thank you, I didn't know that. It's great to hear. And if there's nothing further, our next regular board meeting is in, in two weeks on November twelfth at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom, and with that, I think that concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you all.[1738.01]